Good afternoon and welcome to the city council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, August the 21st. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ask the Administrator to note the roll call with the two members of the council absent. Councillor Droba is watching the eclipse in Kentucky and I believe Councillor Jacksaw is in San Francisco. So have a small crew today. With that, we'll go to the agenda. Your approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that number eight on new business be deleted at this time. The Chair of the Human Resource Committee is not here and I would believe there'd be a lot of questions and I feel it's only fair to the other three members of the council that they be allowed to look at both proposals and talk to staff with any questions they might have, so.
Okay, so you're asking that we would delete item eight of the new business? Great. Are there any objections to deleting item eight? With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda with deletion of item eight?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda with the deletion of item eight, given that two of the members of the council are not present and there could be questions that need to be answered before action is taken. Would then have the vote on the agenda with that deletion? Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and the agenda is going to be, have item eight deleted. Move to the approval of the minutes of the August 7th, 2007 meeting.
Move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs and second by Councillor Pearson to approve the minutes of the August 7th meeting. Discussion on the motion or the minutes.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and minutes are approved as presented. Go to the resolution on payment of claims and transfers. On transfers, we have to the general fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars to be transferred. The permanent improvement fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, we would transfer twenty-five thousand. And to the reserve for capital outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, we would transfer seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. On the accounts payable, the City of International Falls regular claims are a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Airport commission claims of twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents. And the library board claims of five thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Your pleasure with the resolution to approve the transfers on the accounts payable.
Move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Discussion on the resolution or the transfers or payment of claims. Hearing none, question?
Abstain.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried with two, four, and one abstention on the resolution to approve the transfers and the payment of claims.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
The reason for abstention is because there's two claims on there for my business.
Yes. Providing wood to the city parks. We'll next go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that is not on the agenda that would like to speak to the council at this time? Thought there'd be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. That we will move to the consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda and that's to approve the necessary expenses for two administrative staff to attend the Civic Systems Seventeenth Annual Symposium, September 14 and 15 in the Wisconsin Dells. Item two is to approve expenses for the water, Street Water Commissioner to attend the Minnesota Water Sanitary Sewer Collection System Workshop in Duluth on September 30th. And third item is to approve the necessary expenses for the Street and Water Commissioner to attend the Advanced Management and Supervisory Leadership Training Program, October 2nd through the 4th in Eden Prairie, Minnesota. Your pleasure with the consent agenda. Motion by Councillor Briggs, second by Councillor Pearson. Approve the consent agenda. Question?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Then move to new business. Item number one under new business is to approve the request to use Smokey Bear Park during the annual mill outage scheduled in October 2017 by Cater For You, Jennifer Gustafson. Jennifer, do you have anything that you want to say? You can certainly come up.
Yeah, also the O for Sweet, Miki Ballinger, we have been talking about, so, and I know she has a medical appointment tomorrow. Miki Ballinger.
Oh, yes, Miki.
O for Sweet here.
Thank you. Have we had any requests from anyone else or from her? Okay. All right. So the request for use of Smokey Bear Park for, during the, what, lunch hour primarily? Maybe?
Probably all day.
Okay.
I think Miki will probably do breakfast for maybe ten.
Okay, and that would be by two catering firms, Cater For You and O for Sweet?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Your pleasure with that request?
I would move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the request.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I would assume, City Administrator, this would fall under all the rules in the past that we've allowed this so far.
Yes.
Okay.
This has been done previously and worked well.
Last year, sure.
Very good. Further discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and request is approved. Thank you. Item number two under new business is to authorize the proposed budget of one thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars for the community-wide cleanup day, scheduled for eight to noon on September the 23rd. Joe Schwartz is the Chair.
Well, first, Mr. Mayor. Their last one that we had was a tremendous success and it was unbelievable what we got there and the trucks and stuff that were involved. We have a little trivia here that had gotten from Friends Garbage and, like I wanted to. So we had twenty yards of garbage, twenty yards of demo, thirty yards of recyclables with twenty yards of garbage representing about three to four hundred customers. That's what we hauled away that day. Besides all the brush and the bushes and stuff that we took, and O'Brien took a full load there, we had three roll-offs full of brush and trees that we hauled out as well. So, I mean, it was very much a success. Now, I know in here it says sixteen hundred and forty-five dollars. I don't know if we can change that number or not, but what I wanted to do in discussions with Ken was have not to exceed two thousand, because this is going to be late September, so I'm anticipating leaves and more garbage possibly coming at the end of that. I mean, just long as we spend up to, doesn't mean we're to spend that, but instead of coming back and asking you for a couple hundred dollars to pay the bills, if we could just have that leniency in there.
Questions for Joe Schwartz?
Basically gonna be the same as what we did in June, right? Set up and everything else. Still want my trailer? Okay. I would move that we allow expenses up to two thousand dollars for the cleanup day on September 23rd.
Okay, authorize a budget up to two thousand dollars for the community-wide cleanup, scheduled for Saturday, September the 23rd, eight AM to noon. And where is that?
Set up, where they set it up? It'd be in the high school parking lot.
Parking lot, yes.
With the new parking lot, is that, is that gonna?
Kevin's already given us permission to do it.
It's okay?
Yeah.
I just don't want to scar their new parking lot. It looks too beautiful to park in even.
No, watch it real close. If it gets close, we can throw some boards underneath the rollers and stuff on the roll-offs if we have to. Yeah, we'll be okay there.
Okay, very good. Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and budget is approved for up to two thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Item number three under new business, to approve the resolution authorizing execution of the Minnesota Department of Transportation Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant Contract.
Move on the resolution.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to approve the resolution and adopt the contract.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the contract.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted and contract is approved. Thank you. Item number four under new business is to approve the resolution approving the application for the exempt permit for the Borderland Alamo Club to conduct a raffle with the drawing to be held Saturday, December the 7th, 2007. It doesn't say the location, does it say on here? Must be at the Alamo Club?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Or 1057.
Council's pleasure with the resolution to approve the exempt permit. Motion by Councillor Pearson.
Second.
Second by Councillor Briggs to adopt the resolution approving the application. Discussion. Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted and the raffle is approved. Thank you. Item number five under new business is to request purchase of a McGrath video, I'm not gonna say it right, but.
Laryngoscope?
Laryngoscope package for two thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars, twenty-five cents from the Physio Control for the Ambulance Department. Come from the General Supplies Budget Category. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a package deal for the video laryngoscope and accessories needed to operate that. It's recommended that ambulances have two methods of providing advanced airways, so we do stock the standard laryngoscope in what is called an air track device. That's our secondary device right now. The air tracks force the user to place their face very near a patient's face, increasing risks of exposures. The McGrath's a little easier to use and allows the provider to keep their face at a safe distance and I'm gonna spare the audience of any details there, but if anybody wants to see a demonstration, we can arrange that for any of the councillors that want to see what exactly we're talking about. It is a necessary item that we're looking for and we do have adequate funding in the ambulance line item budget and our general supplies, so again, if there's further questions related to that, I would rather handle them outside of the open meeting.
Is the package just one or is it one for each of the ambulances or?
It's one device. The, what's listed in the top paragraph there, the accessories, is there's multiple, it can be used multiple times, but it is one device and we'd house that with our Lucas device, our CPR aid, our Lucas device. The two devices go hand in hand. The situation would dictate that both items would be used at the same time, so that's our tentative plan. We do have two Lucas devices, so probably either near the end of the year, if we have leftover money in the general fund or in our general supplies, we'll either purchase a second one or wait till the beginning of next year to purchase a second one.
And those are used for generally transfer over the road?
Nine-one-ones typically.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem.
Great to know. All right, council's pleasure, questions for the chief before we have a motion?
Just to get the airways open, right? Main part?
Yep.
I would move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to approve the purchase of the McGrath Laryngoscope for two thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Second by Councillor Briggs, or Councillor Pearson, excuse me. Discussion. Questions?
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried and request is approved. Thank you. And you have the next one, too? Yes. Got the, item number six under new business is, I'd like to take it in two separate motions. One, to accept the resignation of John Sloan from the firefighter roster.
Correct. I would move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to accept that resignation.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Discussion with regard to that motion. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and resignation is accepted and we have the appointment of Stacy McIntyre to be a paid-on-call firefighter. Chief.
Correct, Mayor. As you remember, this spring, we did put on seven new firefighters. Mr. Sloan was one of the seven that had applied and got onto the department. The Civil Service ranks every applicant, one through, I think we had fourteen applicants, and they approved their position on the fire department. Mr. Sloan, through personal reasons, found out it was a little more than he anticipated and asked to resign and we worked that out. And then I spoke with the Civil Service Commission. We have not started firefighter one and two training for those yet. They will start on the 29th of August, so I felt it was an opportunity to put on the next person before classes being start. They agreed Stacy is the next person in line, so we're looking for her approval to be on the fire department. And again, the Civil Service did approve that appointment or the listing and approved placing her on, so now we're here to approve that appointment.
She is the next person from the active roster that the Fire Civil Service Commission has approved.
Correct.
Council's pleasure with the appointment of Stacy McIntyre.
Move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Point Stacy McIntyre as a paid-on-call firefighter effective September the 1st. Is that, is that a correct start date or do you want that, I mean, if she's gonna, are you gonna start training, you said, on the 29th?
She will start classes on the 29th. For our numbers and relief association, beginning of month's work really nice for us.
Okay.
So with your approval, I would like the effective date, the first, even though she would attend her first class on the 29th of August. If that's a possibility, if not, we can make adjustments.
I was just gonna ask if that's a liability problem, having her start when she's not officially a member.
I don't think so from a training standpoint. She does serve as an EMT at this point as well, so she's already an employee.
As long as she's not a liability problem.
Well, the fact that she's an EMT, I think, which if she were not, then I think you'd have an issue. I'm assuming that she's also gonna be paid for this training, right?
Correct.
So, under the auspices that it's, she's an EMT, which is September 1st, is she, will she continue her EMT duties then and this'll supplement that?
Correct.
I don't think there'd be an issue since she's already an employee.
Okay, thanks.
All right, September the 1st, 2017 will be the effective date then. Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and appointment is approved. Thank you, Chief. Item number seven is the 120-day notice form for intent to negotiate contracts with the International Association Machinists and Aerospace Workers, AFL-CIO, woodworkers, local lodge number W-33, for the police department and the firefighter engineers and paramedic contracts. So approval of that would open negotiations or serve the 120-day notice form to begin Council's pleasure with that.
Mr. Mayor, this is for council information. You can acknowledge receipt of the 120-day notice and then the council will need to probably formally appoint a negotiating committee and perhaps we'll want to do that at a future meeting.
You'd be looking for volunteers. No, I'm not, just looking at both. I'm looking at anyone that's here. Your pleasure with the approving the 120-day notice or accepting the 120-day notice?
Motion, I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to accept the 120-day notice, second by Councillor Pearson. Question on the motion or the negotiations? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and accepting the notice form for the purpose of negotiating contracts. Thank you. Then move to reports of boards, committees and department heads. City Administrator?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I, council, I was just gonna mention that I did, I did visit the Capitol and they had the three-day event to acknowledge the grand opening for the building and it's a, it's an impressive facility and there was a good, a fairly good turnout on the Saturday that I was there, which was a week ago Saturday, and a nice fireworks show that night, so it was a nice facility and I wouldn't expect anything less after 310 million, but I think the people really appreciated it. There was a lot of people going around in large tours at the various areas of the Capitol and it was an opportunity to see the Supreme Court Justice's courtroom and back rooms and that's typically not always an opportunity that people had, so I, I did that and appreciated it. I don't have anything else that I would share with you right now other than that and don't have anything else unless there's any questions.
We want to announce the special meeting that is planned for August the 29th or that we're calling for August the 29th for the purchase or leasing of radios for the.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had talked briefly at a Budget and Finance Committee meeting and we've been entertaining a proposal from Motorola to acquire radios either through an outright purchase or through a lease and we had set a meeting for eight o'clock AM on Tuesday, August 29th to do that in a special meeting with the city council and we would expect the two councillors who are not present today to be available hopefully for that meeting as well, so we can have some discussion and then the council can take action on entering into a seven-year lease to outfit the fire department and the ambulance department primarily with some mobile units for our vehicles as well as portable units for our firefighters and paramedics. At the conclusion of that special meeting where hopefully you will take action on that lease proposal, we would move into a Budget and Finance Committee meeting to again discuss and review department budgets and formulate our budget, preliminary budget for 2018 and our preliminary levy. And just to remind the council, we need to have our preliminary budget and preliminary levy set into the office of the state auditor, not later than September 30th of this year.
All right, council's pleasure then with having a special meeting on Tuesday, August 29th at eight AM for the purpose of the purchase/lease of radios for the fire ambulance department and Public Works.
Move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. For that special meeting. Question on the motion? Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried and the meeting will be held for that purpose. It will be followed by a meeting of the Budget Committee of the city council to work further on the city budget. Other from the city administrator?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, council, I have nothing special to report, just business as usual. Police department's keeping me busy. One thing I would note, and Ken and I have had a discussion about this, in the past, I've been on the negotiating team for all of the union contracts and it became a little uncomfortable with the police department, because I work so closely with those officers, than to be kind of across the table and not strictly adversarial, but it sometimes feels that way, so I think Ken and I thought it'd probably be best if I not be on the police and fire negotiating contract, but I'd be happy to continue to work on the other contracts. That's all I have.
Very good. We will note that, that you would continue to be part of the negotiating committee for the other contracts except for those with the machinist union on the fire and police.
That'd be my preference, because I work so closely with the police officers and with them being witnesses and for me to take a position that they shouldn't be paid as much as they'd like to be paid, kind of makes it awkward, at least for the short period after negotiations are done, but, you know, I think they all realized in the past that I'm just trying to do a job and I've got a different hat that I put on, but I, it was, Ken and I both felt that that'd be better for everybody if I not participate in that one.
Thank you for being on that committee.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, so what the city attorney is suggesting is that he would not participate with the collective bargaining discussions for the police union. The same union represents the firefighters and param-
Same union represents the firefighters and paramedics, but I think it is his intention to participate in negotiation with firefighters and paramedics, which is a separate contract than the contract that we have with the police department. So, he would not participate with the police department. He would with the firefighter engineers and the paramedics, and he would also participate with the local forty-niners who represent the Public Works employees and two administrative staff downstairs. So, he would just not participate in the negotiation. Same union represents the firefighters and paramedics as well as the police department. So.
Firefighters and Public Works, you would participate?
I would, yes, to the extent that they're negotiated separately, yes. I just don't want to be sitting across the table from police officers indicating in any way that they're not worth as much as they can possibly get, because we have great police
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I, too, would say, even though I will be across the table from the police department, I would not in any way at all diminish what the city attorney is saying about the police department. We have an outstanding police department. We have outstanding firefighters, paramedics. All of our employees devote a great deal of time and effort to what they do and try to do a good job. And of course, again, while it looks like we're antagonistic or we're on opposite sides, we need to work together. We all have the same objective, which is providing outstanding service to the public. I don't really look at it as adversarial, but sometimes we come to, we have to negotiate an agreement that's mutually acceptable to both groups. So, we're looking forward to having, to doing that and coming up with a good agreement like we.
Echo those sentiments. Thank you. We'll move to department heads. Chief Maston.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I know you had a busy week last week, and thank your officers for that. Chief Manasa?
I don't think you reported this time.
Thank you. Move to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Any reports at this time? I would submit the mayor's report. I don't know if everyone's aware, the one item on the second page of my report that we will be impacting the traffic on Fifty-three, because we're going to be making improvements to some water valves on the east side of Fifty-three, which will take out the two northbound lanes from Nineteenth Street up to Seventeenth Street, and create in your neighborhood there of south north. So, it will be, they'll be making it with cones. They'll be dividing up the southbound lanes, one to be northbound and the other to continue southbound. So, there'll only be one lane going north and one lane going south for several blocks there. It could go as long as three days to get that work completed, but the city needs to, and they've got the approval of MINDOT to move ahead with that. So, it's a good time to get that done. And then I think you just sent out a news release from MINDOT. City Administrator?
Yes, thank you. We did receive a newsletter or a news release last week. MINDOT's going to be starting work on Highway eleven between Pellon Junction and International Falls. They're anticipating that work will start on Tuesday, September fifth, and it will go into October, and there will be much of the time that the directional traffic is limited to one lane. So, there'll probably be flaggers, and that traffic is going to be slowed up during the construction period, but it'll start the day after Labor Day and extend into October.
Right. So, that's good information. Peace also. Anything further to counter boards and commissions or council committees? Not anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? If not, we thank you for your attendance, and our next city council meeting will be, regular city council will be September the fifth, and we'll have a special meeting for the purpose of the purchase lease of radios on August the twenty-ninth. With that, declare this meeting adjourned.